Julie, would you like to take your own call, please?
Sure. Rob Toyer.
Here.
Lisa Noback.
Here.
Michelle Blythe.
Here.
Yvonne Gallardo.
Here.
Jan Schwedee.
Present.
Heather Logan.
Present.
Deborah Nelson is excused.
Mayor Vanny, I move for approval of the agenda eliminating item four, which will come back at a later date.
Second.
Question?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any disapproval? None heard. Approved. Okay, we'll move on to our first item on the workshop, airport equipment purchase. Monroe?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Today I'm going to be talking about airport equipment purchase. Specifically, the airport staff would like to request approval to purchase a 2012 Star Trek 84 telehandler. A developer at the airfield is selling the Star Trek lift for a price comparable to others currently on the market. Please take a look at your attachments for questions. And since the lift is currently located on the airfield, staff will have to avoid, or will actually get to avoid delivery costs, resulting in additional savings. Moreover, purchasing this lift will eliminate the need to rent one in the future, further contributing to cost savings. Maintenance and operations, along with airport operations, have indicated that acquiring this lift will assist, sorry, will be an asset for the airport as an operation preventing maintenance needs increases. Quick history, the airport staff currently does not have a lift and the MNO has indicated that only, they only have one ladder, which does not extend as far as, and is used throughout the city. So this would be used only for airport. Do I have any questions?
Heather?
Thank you, Mayor Vanny. Hi, Monroe.
Hey, how are you?
So you don't have a lift now?
Correct.
So how do you, how do you get lifted?
So for every project that we have, we have to rent one and they have to deliver it and then we have to use it for a certain set of time.
Okay. And it says that the budget category is capital outlay, so was this included in the 2025 capital list?
It was not. That's why it's coming to council. It's a budget amendment. We do have the funding for it, but it was not included in the budget.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions? I just have a quick one. I'm assuming, looking at the model number, it's a 42-foot lift?
Pardon? No, no, not a 42.
No, it'll go up 42 feet. Okay. Okay. Great. And then you made, made comment that it'd only be used on the airport?
That is correct.
MNO would not be able to use it for?
On the airfield.
Just, okay. Okay. No other questions seen. Thank you, Monroe. Okay, we'll move on to our next item, item number two, the bid award for 188th Street and Smokey Point Boulevard Roundabout Project. Jim Kelly?
Thank you very much, Mayor Vanny and council members. This item before you is a list of bidders and the apparent low bidder for the second bidding of the Smokey Point and 188th Roundabout Project. As you recall, I came to you several weeks ago before you went on vacation and requested that we reject all bids from the first bidding due to several protests that were going on. We, we rebid the project and a list of the bidders that provide bids on the second bid, as well as the low apparent bidder, SRV Construction, is attached to the council agenda bill. We're right now going through the qualifications of the bids, which includes reviewing several protests again and getting the bids reviewed and approved by Washshot. When I come to you next week, I will have a list and a recommendation of who the qualified bid is and who we should award the project to. We, we did take a look at the protests and I discussed them with the city attorney. We addressed the protests that we did receive and we gave the protester formal notification that the city is going to be moving forward with recommending SRV as a low bidder pending review of his qualifications.
Any questions? Jan?
Okay, I know the answer to my question, but I'm going to ask it anyway so that it's unwritten in our minutes. Is there any way in the world those roundabouts can be four-lane instead of two? I know the Swift Go line is not going to be going up there if they're not four and I-
We've been speaking constantly with the Swift, with the people and the roundabouts can accommodate an articulating bus.
Have you seen the route that they've already planned?
Yes, I have. We've been talking about that and I've been speaking with-
Doesn't go north, okay.
It, it does not go north. It does not go north at this time, however, they included it as an alternative. So going north up Airport Boulevard and then west on 188th and then down to the transfer station is an alternative. So during our meetings, they did not exclude that.
Okay. Heather?
Thanks, Don. Oh, shoot, I forgot it was, oh, the, the protest this time around is just from one party?
Oh, it was one party who protested the bid of the low bidder and then another party who protested that protester and then the low bidder who protested the protest. So there's a lot of people just protesting each other.
A lot of protesting.
It is, you know.
And so when you have to talk to the city attorney about the body of the protest, it's to determine if it appears that the city made any errors in judgment, so to speak?
There were seven points that the protester raised. I addressed each one of the points. I discussed them at depth with our city attorney and he concurred with my recommendation that the protests and the items that were brought up are minor and waivable and that the intent of the bid is valid and should move forward.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Any other questions? Hey, one question, Jim. SRV, that's the contractor that just did the airport, isn't it?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. They did a good job out there.
They were also on the, the first bid, but they came in a lot lower.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item, Island Crossing Sub area plan contract amendment with Makers Architecture. Amy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Vanny and City Council. Excuse me. So this item is a housekeeping item, hopefully. So so this is for, so we already have an approved contract and amendment. That's part of your packet that was signed. So it never officially came through City Council for approval. We did talk about, so I believe I know why it got missed. The first portion was when we were doing the 25, 26 budget. So it was, or 24, I'm sorry. It was included in the budget and so I think it got missed when we were like, yeah, 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 we want to do a sub area plan and then we just did it instead of bringing the contract back. And then the amendment was talked about at the council retreat. And it was, yeah, 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 let's do the amendment, let's get this done. And we never officially brought it back through council. So the, the contracts are signed already, but I need to bring it back through, through council. I can't answer questions for you, but the first amount was for the 238, 238,908.50 and then we added the 90,000 for the completion of the EIS and planned action. And so the total contract amount is the 328,908.50. We had budgeted 220 in each of those years, so we are not over the total budget. And I'm hopefully, I explained it well enough. So if you have any questions, I can, or I can try to answer them. And then that second, or that first chart, I believe, where it says Island Crossing Sub Area Plan Budget, the one that's like this, should explain where everything is at. So I do apologize. It was an oversight on our department.
Any questions? Heather?
Amy, you mentioned that pending any additional invoices.
Correct.
But it looks like, I can't see anything. It looks like you still have $106,000 in play and that should cover-
Yes.
Any invoices and you're still good.
Yeah, we should actually still be under the 106.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be close, I think, but it should be under.
Okay.
We will not let it go over the 106.
Any other questions? Okay, none seen. Then we will move on to item five, ordinance amending Arlington Municipal Code Chapter 20.110. Again, Amy?
Thank you. So this is a kind of a big rewrite of our mixed-use development regulations. So hopefully you, so it just, we just needed to clarify a lot of the items in here. When it was originally adopted and I did an amendment previously to this, we've just had some challenges with the intent and not having it be interpreted by us and having it be very clear. So in the first couple pages, you'll see that we're really pushing to make sure that the commercial portion of each development is built when it's constructed. So the, just a reminder, the mixed-use development regulations are over all of our highway commercial, general commercial and neighborhood commercial zones. So we're losing out potentially on some commercial when we allow the residential. But the whole point of the mixed use is we're getting that residential to support the commercial that would not actually be built. So just a reminder of kind of how, how the mixed use code works. I don't know how long you want me to speak on this code amendment. I, I can speak for quite a long time. I enjoy it, so it might, but I did include it in your summary, so I don't know if you want me just to kind of highlight the summary. It's kind of a question back to council on how much you want to hear from me tonight or if you're okay with the summary that's provided. Okay. Okay. Yeah, questions?
Just go through some questions and, okay, Heather?
First of all, I want to compliment whoever had to come through this and find every error and I love what you've done with the code. It's clearer, it's more organized, it makes sense. The thing that caught my eye was moving from five stories to six. And I'm curious what you get with six stories that you can't get with five.
Usually parking, like a level of parking.
Meaning if you build a six-story building, you, you can require them, I'm making it up now, 50 extra spaces or whatever?
No, like parking within the building, structured parking.
A parking garage?
Yeah.
What does "yeah" mean?
Well, they don't have to do it. That's the thing, like-
Okay.
So right now, our parking regulations would not, it wouldn't really be conducive probably for someone to go six stories because they have to have the elevators, there's certain elevator requirements after three.
Yep.
Excuse me. And so more than likely, if someone was to build right now today, they would have some sort of parking garage. But we have a potential development out there, not submitted, just in the, in the works, where they're going to have first floor parking on the backside and then go up on top of that. But that's only at the, they're not proposing to be over three or four stories. So I'm just bringing this back to, because we had it in there before and getting ready for the TOD.
Right.
So the TOD will be a quarter mile around the bus rapid tran, this current station. That I won't be bringing back until, we don't have to have anything adopted until '29. So we're to start, my plan is to start work on it in '27.
Okay.
With a consultant for '27, '28 and really work on that. And so that'll be a quarter mile, but it doesn't hit this location. So same kind of thing, if anyone remembers from the last time, I don't know if everyone was on council at that time, I think they were. But the whole point was the, the trees of the airport are at like 150 to 200 feet in that area and then there's a 200-foot buffer-
Yes.
That can never come down.
Yes.
And so we were like, why not? Not why not, but that's like our place to do it. And so we're not impacting anyone from behind. So it's still that three, three, four stories on the front.
And then-
And then it will go up.
Graduating up.
Yep, and then I kept Yvonne's stuff in there for like the step, the step backs. See, I remember who told me things. So when they're on like a side street, then they're going to have to go up like three stories, come in, go up and then come in. Like they'll have to step it back.
Okay.
So it's just not six stories like this right on, right on the road.
Behemoth, okay. Why is this six-story plan limited to between 180th and 183rd?
Because of the trees.
Oh, solely?
It's only for the trees because we don't want to impact other neighbors.
So this just gives us an opportunity to put more housing-
Correct.
Right in this spot to help us meet the growth management plan.
Right, because it's within, it's not within the quarter mile. It's close. I mean, it might hit it at the bottom. But the, I should have brought the maps that Katie just did for me, but the, the northern side of that quarter, quarter mile is, is with this.
Oh, okay.
And so that would allow it to go outside of that quarter mile and still be within walking distance to the, the bus rapid transit.
Okay.
So and this is just an option. If someone comes in and they only want to do four stories there, we'll allow that. It's just up to six.
Okay. Do we receive any kind of funding from any source by building transit-oriented development? Or is it just good planning?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
That's going to be, well, we're going to be looking at that with the TOD.
Yeah.
Especially, and then we're doing an affordable, we never did our affordable housing chapter. That'll be coming to you guys in '26.
Okay.
And so I don't know if we will get anything, but the consumer would get, would get things. I have to talk to Jim about some reduced impact fees. I, I mean, we can get, we might be able to get some grants to help us with the plan to, to write it. It's, it's just a requirement around the BRT.
Yeah.
So it'll, it'll come down to us eventually.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Amy.
And I'm sorry, I meant to point that out as that is the big change, so.
The six-story.
Yeah.
And some of that too, Amy, if I'm correct, isn't, that TOD, that's, that's a new state requirement-
Yes.
In that transit center, you have to build up to, could be up to eight stories or something, I think I heard.
Yeah, and it might be a minimum at that point and not a max.
Yeah, so that's just something that we pretty much have to, have to swallow and-
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that will be-
Be prepared.
That will be coming in two or three years to you guys. It'll be a big change for Smokey Point in that quarter mile.
Yeah, yep. Any other questions? Okay, none seen, then I think we'll move on to item number six, ordinance amending Arlington Municipal Code Chapter 5.28.
Amy, all right, thank you. So this is an amendment to AMC Chapter 5.28, Business Licenses, and this is a state mandate that we luckily caught before it, before we couldn't get it to the Department of Revenue. So they sent an email to us. This is in regards to Senate Bill 5897. And then we are a business licensing service partner with the state, with the Department of Revenue for the business licenses. So we're required to raise the minimum of $2,000 per year to businesses that make, they're allowed to make up to four without getting an out-of-city business license. So all that's changing is the threshold from our current of 2,000 to 4,000. I hope you don't ask me about the, their consumer price index because I took their straight, straight model code that they gave me and I don't understand what their, what that formula is. So I shouldn't say that, but it, just be, I, I don't really understand. I think it's coming that we have to do this every four years as well. I'll be bringing it back to you and it'll probably go up. That's how I understood it. And then they use each 12-month period to, to figure out what that price is going to go up. And this was, like I said, state mandated, so we brought it forward so we could get it to, we have to get it to Department of Revenue 60 days before January 1st for it to go into play.
Any other questions? Okay, none seen. Thank you, Amy. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, the police quarterly report. Mike Gilmore.
Mayor, members of council, thank you for your time tonight. The Arlington Police Department 2025 second quarter report details staffing levels, contractual updates and significant operational activities. The department currently maintains 32 full-time employees, which is slightly lower than our 42 allotted FTEs. Some significant achievements for this quarter include collaborative, collaborative law enforcement activity with FBI and several local jurisdictions in which two subjects were arrested for internet crimes against children. Long, detailed, drawn-out investigations and our investigations unit was instrumental in that, in that arrest. Our operational innovations highlighted the use of our flock cameras and other area flock cameras in the arrest of an armed robbery suspect. The advancement in technology and training marked by, is marked this quarter or that quarter by Snoomish County 911 switching to digitized encrypted radio frequencies for all of the officers in Snoomish County and issuing upgraded firearms platform for our officers in the quarter. We had some notable personnel movements, which included Officer Mike McCoy retiring and going to the Still Guamish Tribe of Indians, working with them. Officer Ambrose, she transitioned to the new Academy's PAC instructor position. And Sergeant Atkins made a transition to become our new training sergeant, which all of those transitions are just instrumental in the targeted career advancement of some of our officers. Community engagement continues to be a priority for us. Second quarter, we participated in Coffee with Cops, the Military Child, the Military Child Appreciation Month with a Touch of Truck event over on the Navy base, the bicycle rodeo, graffiti removal volunteer activity and assisted with the opening of the community, or the Smokey Point Community Park and the Splash Pad Haller. Our community outreach team continues to do great work. Just in the month of June alone, they had 24 contacts, 24 additional contacts. So that team continues to do fantastic work throughout the county. And our records department had two staff members achieve certifications and public records requests, enhancing our department transparency and professionalism. You can see in your report there, the crime statistics had a mixed trend this quarter. We had a slight increase in assaults and DUIs, but we had reductions in robbery, vehicle theft and burglaries compared to the previous quarter. So that's just a high-level overview of the second quarter for you and I'm welcome to take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Heather?
Do you have any insight or is it just random? The, the trend lines are crazy so far in '25 compared to '24. Some are up, some are down. What causes such chop in the water?
It's hard to say. We are, we are a transient location with the two main thoroughfares, Highway 9 and I-5. So it could be increased volumes on those traffic ways. It, it's hard to pinpoint what that trend is predicting because it does change just to those, yeah.
Any other questions? None seen. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number eight, the North County Regional Fire Authority Quarterly Report. Dave Kraske.
All right, welcome back. I'm batting cleanup tonight, it looks like. We, given the, the second quarter report, so going back April 1st through June 30th, kind of the report was in your packet, just to kind of highlight a few things. In the upper left, it talked about unit, unit hour utilization. So how busy our units are over a 24-hour period. It highlights what some of those percentage points are. 847, which is our busiest, basic life support unit, transport unit, is by far our busiest unit averaging about 19 to 20% UHU, we refer to it as. And we have, all the units have plenty of capacity for, for to be busier. When that number starts to approach 30% is when we need to start thinking about that, that unit is, is at capacity. It can't do much more. So we'll be good looking forward the next few years as far as adding any additional units. So gives you an idea how busy the crews are. Happy to report that with the Fire District 21 ILA to jointly staff Medic 46, that that station is, both those units are dedicated every day now. So I know that's been kind of an issue the last few years, kind of since we annexed into North County. So Engine 46 and Medic 46 are dedicated every day. There's five people there 24 hours a day. Then beside that, kind of call volume by station, we have six stations we staff and we really have three busy stations and three slower stations. So Station 48 on the west side of the airport is by far the busiest station. In that second quarter, they ran just under 1,300 calls. Station 46 here in Arlington was just under 800 and Station 99 in Stanwood was just over 800. And then the others drop into the twos and 300. So we have, really have three really busy stations and three slower, more rural, remote stations. In that second quarter, we did 1,212 EMS transports to different hospitals. And our, our primary campuses we go to every day, day in, day out, without question, is Skagit Valley and Mount Vernon, Providence and Everett or Cascade here in Arlington. Cascade is where we go the most. Of the 1,212, we had 505 to Cascade, about 404 to Providence and a little less than 300 to Skagit. I'm just hitting a few of the things that are really Arlington-specific. Of the two Arlington stations, 46 and 48, Station 48 ran 1,289 responses and Station 46 had 777. And of EMS transports just within the city limits of Arlington with the three transport units we have, there was about 544 transports. So definitely the, the bulk of what we do is EMS transport. Our, our, the data kind of that we measure ourselves by, our turnout time, our response time and our, is really good. So our average turnout time, which is the time that from we're notified of a call to we are en route, is we average one minute and 23 seconds here in the city of Arlington. to we are en route, is, we average one minute and 23 seconds here in the city of Arlington. And our overall response time, we average seven, in this quarter, it was seven minutes and 59 seconds, which is a little, little higher than it's been in the past. I don't necessarily have an answer for that besides just geographics on where the calls were located is going to drive that number up. And our overall EMS, EMS response time is just under five minutes. So there's about a two-minute difference there, and you can ask why, and it's because for, for a fire response, the crews are putting on their bunker gear in the bay before they're leaving, they're kind of getting ready for the call before they get into the unit. And then on the very bottom of that second page is, is a heat map that kind of dictates, shows where our call volume is within the city limits, and it is Old Town, Kent Prairie, and Smokey Point, and it is really address-specific, and it is the, the senior living facilities and the clinics. So it is Cascade Valley Senior Living, Olympic Place, Cedar Point, Field Senior Living, the Stillaglamish Senior Center, and then the Cascades Gadget Walk-In Clinic. They are just the, the addresses we are at every single day. Yeah. Happy to report some, some awards that we were, were given in this first, second quarter of the year. So the American Heart Association awarded us their Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Award. Says the American Heart Association presents the Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Achievement Award for proven dedication to ensuring access to best practices and life-saving care. North County Regional Fire Authority is honored to be recognized by the American Heart Association for our dedication to providing optimal care for heart attack patients. This was actually a gold for us this year, just to be recognized at the bronze level. So we were quite happy to be recognized at the gold level for 2024. And then internally in Snohomish County, Snohomish County EMS, which is the agency that oversees all of EMS in Snohomish County, they selected some random calls that were not ordinary EMS calls, and they, it was a blind selection. So it was a panel of all peers that reviewed all the calls and awarded three awards, and I'm just going to speak to two of them, because of these three awards that were given countywide, we were quite humbled and, and honored to receive two of them. So one was an airway award, and it was paramedics Jason Abrahamson, Jacob Esch, and Mitch Cadlec. It was a critical, critical, critical cardiac arrest patient with a compromised airway, and they performed a seldom-performed skill, a field crikothoracotomy with a successful outcome. So the patient ended up walking out of the hospital. So it was a really great call. And then a resuscitation reward for firefighter Ian Phipps, Drew Norville, Luke Beatty, and Trish Sutton, and assumed patient care from Arlington Heights, 849 for a cardiac arrest with bystander CPR performed. They performed several rounds of CPR, administered several rounds of electrical shock, shock therapy, gave proper medications, and patient respond to spontaneous circulation. So we're really, really pleased to award, be awarded two of the three awards. Just today, oh, actually, I shouldn't say that, this company officer's reported today. Academy 25-2, we refer to it as, will run from next Monday through just before the holidays. We have two new, two new employees that were, will be in the academy. We're kind of gearing up for some retirements that we know of early, early next year. Summer events are wrapping up. We have Touch a Truck this Saturday in Stanwood, and I think we're done. So it's been, it's been a busy summer for sure. I was really happy, National Night Out, both events in Arlington and Stanwood, and as we were breaking down, National Night Out was a little nervous to look and see, but that was election night for us with the ballot. So I looked a few minutes after eight, and it wasn't posted yet, and so then I broke everything down, and I looked, and I was really pleased. We had a 62% positive vote, and I was, I was really optimistic that we would, hopeful that we would get 58 to 62%, so we're right there. So very happy about that. Two last things to talk about is 9/11, so here later this week, September 11th, 24 years. You probably, hopefully have seen it advertised on social media a little bit, and that we're going to change it up a little bit in that, in, on, in the morning. We're still going to do the flags in Stanwood on Highway 532. And in the evening, there'll be a memorial and a wreath and stuff set up over here at Station 46. And we're going to start just doing kind of a live gathering event on kind of those five years. So next year will be 25 years, and we will bring in, I'm going to, I want to bring in a speaker and kind of make kind of a, a bigger deal about it. So please feel free to be, to visit the memorial on Thursday. And the last thing that I'm really happy about, and kind of working with Amy on this, is Chief Goforth, our Fire Marshal, has the council kind of discussed a residential sprinkler ordinance a few months ago, and we would love to see that happen. And so the National Fire Sprinklers Association has a demonstration trailer, and it's really kind of fascinating. Think of like a semi-trailer, and it's divided in half, and it's basically two, two glass panels. And so one side of it is sprinkled, one side is not. They are furnished exactly the same, the fire loads are the same and everything. So it's designed to be burned and, and refurnished and rebuilt, and so on the day of your budget retreat, on the third or fourth? Third. I'm kind of working with Paul and Sarah a little bit. You guys are going to do the budget retreat in the morning at 11:00. We're going to stop, and we're going to have this trailer outside, and so you get to kind of watch like how effective a sprinkler is. There'll be a short, just kind of presentation about it, you'll see a demonstration. We're catering lunch-in, so we're inviting this, some of Stanwood Council and community development, as well as Marysville. We'll see how many show up. But we'll make sure it's promptly done, so then you can resume your retreat at 1:00. So I think you'll be fascinated to see it. You can watch it on, on YouTube, and it's, it's pretty amazing to watch. The, the unsprinkled side, just literally, just the whole thing just becomes engulfed. The sprinkled side, the furniture starts to catch off, one sprinkler head goes off, and it's all done.
So we'll all want to buy that for our houses when you're done.
Yeah. So yeah, we're excited to bring that in. Chief Goforth is kind of coordinating to get the trailer here, and it's all coming together. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? None seen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Paul, do you have any, anything for report?
Just a quick update. So we continue to work on recruiting a finance director while we were on break last month, so I wanted to give an update on that. My number keeps changing because when I talk to the recruiter, we, we did, we didn't close the applications, we just did, set a date for first-round reviews. They got 32, or 33, excuse me, application packets by the first-round review. They actually take, took a few more in the middle of trying to set up interviews, and so it topped out at 42. So we got a huge response. There were 16 candidates that met the qualifications, and we just, to, actually, to back up, we had the resumes, and the mayor and I, HR and finance went through them, and we've kind of narrowed it down to some finalists. And so we're setting up panel interviews for the end of this month with the hopes that we can identify somebody and then hopefully bring them on board sometime in November. So you'll, I'm sure you'll hear more about it as it moves forward, but we've got some, what looks like some good candidates. The recruiter wanted me to mention that he was, they have been recruiting finance directors for other agencies. This one, you know, knock on wood, so far is gone. We've gotten a really good response. And he says, interesting notable fact was, is that some of the candidates had really done their research, of course, and, you know, before applying for the job. And he just wanted me to pass along how confident they were in the city of Arlington and how much of a draw that the city is. And so he believes that's the reason why we've got such a strong candidate pool compared to some of the other agencies, so.
Cool.
Yeah.
Cool. Yeah, no, I reiterate what Paul said, there was some really good candidates in there. Yeah. As far as my report, I don't have a lot. I just welcome back. Everybody hopefully enjoyed their, their month off. That's all I have. Do we have any comments from council members or reports?
I just wanted to remind everybody, and if you haven't, don't have plans on Saturday, farmer's market first thing in the morning, of course, and then the Hispanic Heritage event in the afternoon. We have confirmed that the Aztec dancers will be kicking us off at 5:00, and then we have a live band playing all sorts of fun, danceable music from at 6:00, and then our Zumba glowstick party starting at 8-ish with the DJ, and it'll be a lot of fun. So hopefully you all can come out and join us.
Cool. Thank you. Heather?
I had two very exciting updates from the Matt Group. The first one is that the buprenorphine EMS, well, really, it's paramedic, buprenorphine paramedic pilot year was completed, and they had good results from administering buprenorphine in the field. And the gentlemen at North County also participated, and they're going to continue, they're doing some staff moving around right now, but they'll eventually carry that on all of the EMS rigs, giving one more tool in the fight against drug abuse, getting people. The problem with Narcan is it takes the high all the way away, and then you've got withdrawal creeping right in. But with buprenorphine, that doesn't happen, and you can still talk to someone, refer them somewhere. The program comes with a warm handoff, and they had good success with warm handoffs of people going right into treatment. So that's all very encouraging. And the other update is that Snohomish County is arranging for mobile outpatient treatment vans. The first one was launched, I think it was in Sultan, one of those towns east of Monroe, and they're bringing one to North County. They're thinking oh-so, but that's yet to be determined, but it'll be another tool out here. And they're deliberately picking away from towns because there's drug use everywhere, and we're looking for people who don't have transportation or a way to get to treatment, and so Snohomish County is taking the treatment to them.
To them.
And as soon as I know the location, I'll let you all know.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, none seen, then we'll move on. Is there anybody at the public that would like to comment at this time? Nobody's jumping up, I guess not. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Yeah, as you're thinking about this, just wanted to give you a heads up, I do have some items I'm going to add for next week, so you won't run out of things to talk about if you want to, if you want to put some on consent.
Thanks, Paul.
Sure, I'm always happy, always happy to deliver good news.
Go ahead, Rob. I love Rob's answers.
Any thoughts from anybody?
Well, can't we do all the municipal codes?
Put all the codes and ordinances on the consent.
Two needs to stay on new business, for sure, because that one's not complete yet.
So five and six?
About one.
Okay with that?
Yeah.
I mean, they've got the funds for it, so.
Yeah, so what do we say then?
One, five, and six?
I'd like to see five stay. I think there's some, the six-story thing's a pretty big deal, and I think they all are clear what we're leaning for there.
Okay.
So one and six?
So three is just housekeeping, just, if you'd like to consider that.
So one, three, and six.
So one, three, and six on the consent agenda? Okay.
Okay, got it.
I was going to say, almost.
Okay.
How are we done?
I think we're ready.
Move to adjourn, right?
I think so.
Okay, move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? None heard. We're adjourned.
Don's still asking.